I'd like to open the Tuesday, July 16th, regular planning board meeting and public hearing. If you're going to speak, please do so out in the hallway. It looks like we're over capacity in this room. So if anybody would like to see it streamed, you could do so in our office, which is across the hall. Air-conditioned and there's a big screen. So if anybody would like to do that, raise your hand. Say you're not. If you'd like to do that, okay. So I surmise that you're all here to listen to all the regular stuff that we normally do. And please come back and listen again. I think you may be bored for the first bit, but I'm not going to hear the public hearing until 3:15 or later. So first up, and by the way, we're being videotaped and we're going out live on the Towne Channel. First up, our newest creative item, Rita Lane Extension, file number 19-001C, release surety and consultant review fees plus interest and endorse Mylar.
Yep, so this roadway was accepted at town meeting day. By the town has accepted the road. So all we need to do is sign the Mylar, which we can move towards the end of the meeting, and then we need to release the surety for $87,000 plus interest.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion to sign the Mylar?
No, just release the interest.
Okay, so I would extend a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve release of surety and consultant review accounts, and I move to grant final approval of Rita Lane Extension, release of the surety of $87,500 plus interest and the release of the balance of construction inspection funds after payment of the final invoice to SW Cole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is 431 Fisher Road LLC, Stacy Lane, request for surety release, file number 20-002C.
So Derek of SW Cole did a site visit for the final inspection on this, and he considered it 98% complete and recommends that we release $47,000 of the $50,000 we have in surety when retaining the $3,000 for landscaping within the right of way. It's freshly well-deceded, but that's the only item that is not going to leave.
Okay. One motion? Please. And I think we should consider how much for the... $3,000 doesn't sound like much.
You want more?
Okay. My own opinion is you should always have more than that because you could just walk away from $3,000. If it's going to cost you more than $3,000 to fix it.
It's interest.
Let's hold back then?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Forty.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Questions should be directed to the chair. So when the chair opens the floor for comment, I think there was a comment.
Are we able to speak with them?
Are we going to talk about this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So...
Go to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Hi, good sir, members of the board. My name's Ronald Olivera. I own the property. I'm the one who developed the road. What's going on there is the homeowners now that are taking over, you know, their property, they're doing landscaping, they're building walls. This is the silt runoff that's running into the road. We've sent our people in. The Haven Escavations been in there multiple times. There aren't any issues with the road or anything that we've done. Road's 100% been completed. This is just runoff of people doing their own landscaping. They've taken over the homeowners association. It isn't really anything that's a fault of myself, the developer, or the people that are doing the work. I think it's unfair to keep increasing my stake in it when it's the homeowners, like I can't control them, tell them what to do with their yards. We can try to police it. We've already been there three or four times and spent $6,000, $7,000 re-cleaning everything, going back, sweeping all the roads. You know, the Haven Escavations are a reputable company. They've been there multiple times. I think it's a little unfair to keep us there at the mercy of the homeowners as they're doing landscaping, doing pools, and not abiding by, you know, certain rules and standards. But we've been there multiple times and spent a ton of money, you know, to keep by the standards of the town.
So I would just say that I think we have... If you have not much influence on that, we have zero. So if the town is going to accept this road, it must comply with what our requirements are. If our consulting engineer says that we need to withhold some for having landscaping working before the town takes it over, I think we should believe him.
I don't think it is reference for work. I think it's just for cleanup till everyone stabilizes their yard. So once everyone's grass has grown in, you know, for whatever season it is, then the silt will stop running into the street. That's all there is, isn't it? For any construction that needs to be done on our... So the road's not accepted yet. You were developing the road. You released lots to the homeowners. We've had, you know, I understand the road is complete. It's not an accepted. I understand. But there's damage on the road on the top course. I mean, Haven Escavation, he's done wonderfully. He went out there and cleaned out, swept it, dumped it to the catch basins. It was concrete and the catch basin was leaking more. So the town hasn't been accepted yet. So until it gets accepted, I wouldn't even really be a favorite of leasing. I would say I'm on hold for that. The consultants being very lenient, and my colleague went to 10,000. So I think, I don't even think that's enough until it gets... By the time this goes, the next time we even get accepted, the town will incur a lot of cost in the past, this job that you've developed. Those are your sales, those are your customers on the road. I respect the town's position. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, thanks. You're so noted. So, do we... Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to partially release surety for 431 Fisher Road LLC, Stacy Lane, for $40,000, maintaining $10,000 for landscaping, and the release of the full consultant review funds at final invoice from SW Cole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Westport Stone and Sand, file number 18-009SP, request for surety release, waiting on SW Cole review.
Yep, so SW Cole went out and did a site inspection. It turns out we don't even have any surety on this one. It was from 2018, so I think it was before we started collecting surety. Just as an update, that project is complete. It's all set.
And it's implied for our regulations?
I did a report from SW Cole this morning stating that it's 100% complete and up to satisfaction.
And because of the whole place, which is sand, I assume we had to bring in Thompson Oil and Vegetations?
Yes, they did, and their vegetation is... I agree.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Next is 82 High Ridge Road, Noposa, file number 23-023SP-FF, close out and release consultant review fees and interest.
Yep, there was just a flexible franchise from the ANR for that one, so it was approved and within our reset. We don't have to go back to it.
One motion, please.
I move to close out, release the consultant review fees of $1,633 plus interest for 82 High Ridge Road, Noposa.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval not required for ANR for Westport Land Conservation Trust, Inc., map 78 lot 8, 9, and 10, 1017 and 1047, Sodom Road. Westport Mass, file number 24-020A, request by applicant for endorsement of a two-lot plan of land located at 1017 and 1047 Sodom Road, a census map 78 lot 8, 9, and 10. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Don Maderas. I'm a professional land surveyor, professional civil engineer with Able Engineering in Little Compton. Joyce Sylvia, the landowner, engaged us through the Westport... Actually, the Westport Land Trust engaged us through their agreement with the landowners to purchase 115 acres to be put in permanent conservation. The existing property is two lots with the existing lot line going from Sodom Road across westerly to the southwesterly portion of the property. What we're proposing to do is abandon that lot line as designated, and the new lot line will run north-south to basically cut off 115 acres in the western quadrant, which the land trust will put under permanent easement. And the remainder, 87 acres along Sodom Road, will be retained by the family and continue to be farmed. There's currently farming restrictions on that front, 87 acres. None of that will change. So we've done a field perimeter survey, the necessary research and field work to determine the boundaries of the parcel.
So the front parcel is in ABR?
That I am not sure of because my charge was to survey the rear 115 acres. We surveyed enough of the front parcel to spatially denote it correctly. However, our contract was to survey the rear to break out the 115 acres for conservation. I've been told by the Westport Land Trust that the front parcel is under a farming restriction. However, I will tell you that's hearsay because I haven't seen anything, but it wasn't up to me or of interest to me to even try to find out if that was the case.
And the back part is not in restriction now?
That is correct. That is my understanding.
And will the back parcel maintain easement to get there somehow?
That's correct. There's an existing gravel road which the farm operator's used to get from Sodom Road, and it's shown on the plan going back to the rear parcel. That will become a right-of-way for the land trust to get to the rear parcel for maintenance vehicles and monitoring and other conservation-related activities.
Okay. So the land trust will own this back parcel?
That's correct.
Not the front parcel?
That is correct.
And... So do you say on the plan that this is... That this doesn't mean it's a buildable lot?
I'm sorry?
It does, yep. Lower right-hand corner, I believe it's right under the signature block for...
Actually, the upper left, under the registry block, under the planning board endorsement block. Endorsement by the planning board does not constitute conformance to the Westport zoning bylaws, nor assure that any lot created herein is buildable.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any questions on the board?
I'll just confirm that this property is in Chapter 61A according to the assessor's database.
The rear parcel?
Both of them.
Both of them. Okay. So I would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled Westport Land Conservation Trust, Inc., map 78 lots 8, 9, and 10, 1017 and 1047, Sodom Road, Westport, Mass, because the plan complies with the provisions of Masterful Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P.
Any second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is appointments to infrastructure and safety committees, to the following committees. Infrastructure and safety and economic development committees.
Planning Board has members who are supposed to be appointed to both of these committees. Manny and Bob Taylor have both been appointed in the past.
On both?
On both. So if that's something that...
Do you know if Bob wants to...
I don't know if Bob does, but Manny's here. I don't know if he'd like to continue serving on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Manny?
Mr. Chair, I would move that Manny Soares be reappointed to economic development. You want these as separate?
No.
And Robert Taylor reappointed to infrastructure.
So are they both on both?
All right, both on both. That's what I meant to say.
What I'm not sure is if Bob wants to continue on both.
Yeah, we should wait until he's...
I think we should wait until Bob is intending to appoint him to anything that he may not want to be appointed to.
One thing, I think Bob does want to continue on infrastructure committee. And Mr. Chair, this board requested you review this. It's kind of holding up appointments to it. And you can't control it, you know?
I know, and it's also halfway through writing the chapter on infrastructure and safety.
So I think we should both put him on. I mean, if he wishes to, I don't think he's going to design it. I won't say economic development, but most definitely with the...
So let's have a motion to appoint both Manny Soares and Bob Taylor to the infrastructure committee and Manny to the economic development.
So...
Can I second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you voted?
Aye.
Okay. Open meeting law certification.
There's a form in your packet. We've provided the open meeting law materials to all of our boards and commissions. The state just updated open meeting law in 2023. If you recall, now virtual hybrid meetings are now codified in the open meeting law, so they've updated their guidelines accordingly. And we have to have all the board and commission members recertify that they've received these materials and that they have read them. So you don't have to sign your forms today, but please do that soon so we can get that over to the town clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
And you also sent out the conflict of interest training.
Good point, yes. There is also a conflict of interest training that board and committee members also have to take. And the clerk's office will automatically receive notification once you've completed that training. It's an online training, so once it's done, they get a notice. So you don't have to let us know. You can just let the clerk's office do it.
I did it today. It's relatively painless, but I wouldn't say it's painless. It's an hour out of your day you won't get back.
And it doesn't let you get out of it.
And it doesn't let you get out of it. You've got to do it.
So, okay. All right. So next up is the 6:15 public hearing. Plat 52 lot 28, Markic Drive, file number 23-031C. This is continued from October 17th and December 12th of 2023 and February 6th of 2024. And before I let it start, I'm just going to recap how we got here because there's a lot of people here who probably don't know any of this. And this is going to also tell you how to interact with us in this meeting. This application was first considered in October 23. Staff recommended that the hearing be continued. The board concurred. The board continued the hearing to December. It was subsequently continued until February 2024. At the February 2024 hearing, the planning office staff recommended that the proposals should either be continued or withdrawn, redesigned, and resubmitted due to the proposal's road being located directly adjacent to the northerly lot lines. That road location would require a waiver. Staff found that the need for the waiver could be eliminated by shifting the road's location southward, which would address some of the planning board's concerns about the subdivision's impact upon the overall area, particularly the Fallon Drive subdivision. Following this planning board meeting, the applicant approached myself and staff about the possibility of granting the town a full easement to the town-owned property to the east to allow full public access to the town property through the applicant's proposed private road. The planning board cannot accept an easement. That is the purview of the select board. To assess the utility of such an easement to the town, the staff asked various departments, such as the Conservation Commission, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Highway Department, and so on, about how the property could be used in the future. This is the town-owned property. There are no plans to modify the town-owned parcel conceptually or otherwise. The easement question is a separate consideration from this hearing. The planning board is tasked with determining whether the project conforms to the subdivision bylaws. This proposal requests several waivers from the town zoning bylaws. These waivers require that the planning board find they are in the public interest. This will be a central part of our discussion here tonight. For tonight's public hearing, public input will be limited to five minutes each to allow those who wish to speak or ask a question through the chair adequate time. Please, if you're going to voice the same concerns already voiced, you may not need to duplicate them. And so we're going to hear from the applicant first, then we're going to hear from the planners, and then from the planning board, and then we'll open it up to the public. And then we'll hopefully close the public hearing and make a decision. So please go ahead. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Matt Pike, registered professional engineer with South Coast Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. So I give a brief overview of the project. Markic Drive, it's a proposed subdivision located at assesses plat 52 lot 28. Plat 52 lot 28 is located on the east side of Drift Road, about a mile south of Old County Road. The current lot is accessed by Drift Road by an approximately 10-foot-wide gravel path. The existing lot's undeveloped and primarily comprised of woodland and fallow fields. It contains approximately 16 acres, about 2.5 acres is wetland. Within the existing lot, we are proposing a 40-foot-wide roadway layout with a 22-foot-wide paved way to access nine proposed residential lots. Each of the residential lots that are proposed are fully compliant with current zoning. They'll contain a single-family dwelling that's accessed by HMA Drive off the proposed way. This is not, contrary to some, you know, information that's been circulating in the town, this is not a high-density or low-income or 40B apartment development. Each of the proposed residential lots exceeds 60,000 square feet, contains the required frontage as required by the regulations. The lots are of similar shape and size and area neighboring subdivisions to the immediate north and south. As far as the stormwater, the stormwater from the roadway will be directed to catch basins leading to a closed condo drainage system. The closed system will discharge to a sediment for bay which leads to infiltration basin. In addition to the roadway BNP's, the underground infiltration units will be installed at strategic points adjacent to the proposed dwellings and HMA Drives. So all the stormwater treatment BNP's will receive and treat and recharge stormwater as required, and they are designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards that Westport rules and regulations govern subdivision of land and the Westport Stormwater Quality and Quantity Control Regulation. And based on previous review comments, so the project's been reworked to the greatest extent practical as requested. And the last time we stood before you, there were eight waivers. We reduced that to two waivers. Currently, the two waivers are a waiver from the 25-foot radius at the street-line intersection with Drift Road. Currently, the layout of the existing undivided lot does not allow a radius at the southeast corner of Drift Road and Markic. Although the 25-foot radius at the street line cannot be complied with, the required pavement radius will be provided. And secondly, there's a waiver for provision regarding the location of subdivisioned streets in relation to the permanent boundaries. So currently, the layout proposed roadway that follows the existing car path, and by following the existing travelway, the stormwater pass also maintained for the stormwater rights. That's all I have to present.
People behind us, they didn't hear you enough. Across the lane. Let me, before you continue, we are over capacity for this road. If it is your desire, we can stream this live in our office across the hall so that you can hear and see what we're talking about. Otherwise, we'll have to move this meeting somewhere. So if the people in the back hallway or out that way could find their way to the office, maybe one of the... All right, so we'll just wait. So we have a problem with overcapacity in this room, and we don't have an alternative site that's handy that we can accommodate everybody. If we continue with the hearing and the people would like us to... This is being livestreamed on YouTube, and if you wanted to ask a question or make a comment, you could, Nadine could send her out a sign-in sheet and get your comments, which could be read into the record. I don't think YouTube would not be interactive, but you could see what's happening. So it's either that or we continue this hearing to another date and time and place that would accommodate all these people. So what is the consensus? What would you like to do?
We don't have the opportunity to interact if this is on YouTube, correct?
Correct.
Yes. One vote to call the meeting to another date. I think this is too important. That's why we won't...
That's my second.
Mr. Chair?
You know, I don't know if whatever I say is going to make a difference, but...
Jim, if we're going to discuss matters of the application, we should reopen.
Reopen the hearing. Reopen the hearing. But I don't think we can reopen the meeting without everybody here. So I would, I would like to continue this hearing, not our meeting, but this hearing to another date, time, and place that would accommodate all these people. I don't know where that place is yet, so...
Library is located in the east corner.
I suppose.
Library is crowded.
The library is small.
The library is small.
Great.
Library is crowded.
Library is crowded.
Library is small.
Yes, dear sister.
Great, so we have a meeting. Why don't we just continue, why don't we just have a hearing now? Anyone that can hear, they can just sit aside and just say comments.
We can't have a public hearing without the ability to interact. So...
So if people want to interact, they'd be in the room, correct?
Well, then, the people, the people who don't want to say something would have to leave, and the people who do would have to leave. And I think that would be cumbersome. I think, so how many people do you think we have here? So... We would have it in the gym downstairs.
Can't go live anything from the gym?
We don't need to go live.
Okay, we'll just be recording.
We can have it before. So did you have to schedule?
Can't you just go to gym now?
No.
I don't have a key. And the only way we can get in, that's eighty-one compliant.
Okay, so why don't we continue this to reopen today? And that would give everybody time to...
Sometimes they have basketball. They have tennis going on.
There's another option, and that is that there are a lot of people here who are in opposition but don't want to speak. And if those people want to sign a piece of paper and then want to leave, we'll receive that piece of paper, and we can continue tonight right here. But otherwise, we are going to continue this until next week, when everyone can be in the room, and we'll be downstairs in the gym. Now, either way is good with us. We can do it now, and some people can stay here and speak, and others can be reported in opposition, and your opposition will be on the record. Whatever you want to do, it doesn't matter.
They thought they're in opposition of clearly. They do not know, they do not know clearly there's been misinformation put out. They do not know that they're clearly in opposition of. That's why these people are here.
Okay, well, then we'll just continue it for a week, and we'll meet downstairs in the gym. I think the gym is probably the best. It's big enough, it's just going to take us a while.
You can't vote by opposition if they don't know what they're opposing?
Yep, good point. We don't, we don't know what the goal is. Yeah, we're going to have to figure it out. Well, who made the motion? So, listen up, okay? So I would move that we continue this public, now listen here, continue this public hearing until one week from tonight at the gym, but I urge everyone to check the town website because if it turns out the gym isn't available, then that will be on the town website, all right? But the motion is to set it for next Tuesday at 6:15, but please, everyone, check the town website. We have to post it 48 hours in advance. So the motion is for next Tuesday, but please, everyone, check, check the town website. If it has to be changed, we'll change it 48 hours in advance. We may have to change it to the old high school. Right, either location or time, it'll be on the... But if we can, we'll put it downstairs here in the gym. So...
Jim has chairs.
A second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so...
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye. The, the public hearing is continued. It's no longer active right now, so we can't speak about it, okay? Okay, we're coming out of recess, and we're continuing our regular planning board meeting. The public hearing for Mark Card Drive has been continued to next week. Next is the 6:30 public hearing for 435 Old Harbor Road, file number 23-037 SPA. Applicant is requesting a withdrawal for this project.
Correct. Yep, another, the known man who leaves back stating that he wishes to withdraw his application for this, so...
Has he signed it?
Yep, it's rejected.
Okay.
We still, we do need to close out and release the consultant review fees for that.
Okay.
So we need a motion.
You want two motions, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to grant the applicant's request to permit the withdrawal without prejudice for a site plan approval of 435 Old Harbor Road application. A second, Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, I move to close out and release the consultant review funds of $1,321.98 plus interest for 435 Old Harbor Road. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the 6:45 public hearing for Burks v. Twin, file number 24-017 SPA, 146 State Road. Applicant is requesting a continuance to August 13th, 2024.
Yep, so a motion to continue the public hearing to August 13th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Could you remind me what this application is for?
Yes, this is 146 State Road. It is, they came before the pre-application consultation. They want to expand the garage and also add parking for a motorcycle repair.
Mr. Chair, at the request of the applicant, I move to continue the public hearing of Burks v. Twin to August 13th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
What else do we have on the agenda for that date?
For 6:15, we have Old County Road, Too Thick Red, where the common dragway modification, he altered the driveway, so he has to come back before us.
Okay. So next is the planner's report.
All right, so the first thing I got is going over the short-term rental, which we issued about a month ago, a little over a month ago, and I just closed it out this morning. We received 428 responses, and I'll circulate this with all of you. I just pulled the data from Google Forms today, so I haven't had the chance to send it out. I'll also be sending it out to respondents because there's a section for them to leave their email address to send it to. So I'll be doing that tomorrow. But I just wanted to go over this with you all very briefly. But before we do that, there are a couple updates on the committee. Jerry Cuttino will be resigning from the committee, and Roger Menard has suggested that Cynthia Kozakowicz is, who is also a member of the CDA, be the CDA's representative. I don't know if I pronounced her last name correctly, I apologize if I messed it up, but that was his recommendation to replace Jerry from the CDA. And this is a subcommittee of the planning board, so that's something for your consideration.
So do we need to move to...
If you would, if you would like to.
On motion, sir? I move that we appoint Cynthia.
Cynthia Kozakowicz?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then...
Michael, could you send a list then of who the committee members are?
Yeah, well, that was going to be one of my questions. Would you like to still serve on that, maybe? While we're shaking things up, you can feel...
It wouldn't be my first, it wouldn't be my first preference.
Tanya is also backing down from it. Tanya, ready? Come on in.
Jim, are you, you're going to be on it?
I am. So you, Jim, you are?
I was.
No, Bob was.
Bob was.
Yeah, but you can be Mark's replacement if you don't.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say I prefer, I prefer not to, but I'm happy if you can meet someone, happy to serve.
Well, we have two planning board members, so do you want to entertain a motion to replace Mark with Jim?
Anyone want to make a motion to replace Mark with Jim?
Replace Mark with Jim?
Jim.
Sorry, yeah.
I thought we had Mark and Jim.
No, it's Bob and Mark.
And Bob and Mark. Now we're going to have Bob and Jim.
Oh, good, all right. That needs to be a motion I'm making. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I have a suggestion for another member.
I, we do need another member because we could have a tie vote. There needs to be five people.
Steve Forbes.
Steve Forbes. I saw that he took the survey.
He's the moderator.
The town moderator, yeah. Do you know if he'd be interested in that?
He is smart as his own, so, yeah, he is good at pointing out the benefits. I think we need somebody who wants to point out the benefits as opposed to the negatives. I don't know if he would do it, but he's going to be not continuing as town moderator.
Really?
Yeah.
So good.
Well, how about we go over the survey results, and then maybe the survey results can help inform who you might like to recommend? Because I think this will hopefully help give us some more... So the first question we asked was who the person is that's responding. So most respondents were residents, 90% in fact, were residents, or were residents and also operate a short-term rental, or they... And in assessing the impact on short-term rentals, most folks who took the survey, and there are 428 responses, I guess I should have looked at that. A majority of people thought that short-term rentals have a positive impact. Nearly a quarter thought neither one that way or the other, and then another quarter thought that short-term rentals have an negative impact. And in terms of type of short-term rentals, people might support it. There was more support for having, respondents were more comfortable having the owner be on-site than somewhere else in town, or somewhere else in the country, or where. So there was a preference for renting a room from an owner-occupied home, or renting a home or accessory dwelling unit, or a room where their owner is residing somewhere on the property. But even still, over a third supports renting a room, home, or accessory dwelling where the owner lives off-site. So there's still, you know, 38%, so there's maybe, you know, some room to find some compromise there. But then when it came to not supporting them, it was 20%, and then having no restrictions, so you could write, you know, sublet a rental or something like that, and that was 15%. So I think the area where there's room for some compromising here and reevaluating our short-term rental bylaw is looking at those top three categories. Regarding where short-term rentals should be allowed, pretty clear, majority supported allowing short-term rentals in the business and agriculture districts. You'll notice that I included in each response to have the option to disallow short-term rentals. That's pretty much stays constant around that 20% mark throughout the survey. But it's pretty clear that most folks are on board with short-term rentals in both the business and agriculture districts. So then when we asked how to regulate short-term rentals, you know, do we want this really extensive zoning bylaw? Do we want nothing at all, or somewhere in between? 52% of people supported some degree of regulatory oversight. Most people wanted, you know, a smaller set of regulations, and so I think maybe where we were headed with the last attempt was in the right direction. But it also, you know, could have made, could have gone too far too, because you see that the 30% set allowed reuse with no additional regulations. So I'd be curious to have a follow-up question to this particular question, to really drill down and see what people are thinking. And you kind of get to that in some of the, some of the next questions. So we asked, should there be a distinction between higher turnover short-term rental, so less than seven days, or have a distinction with between seven days and a long-term traditional rental? And folks supported not having a classification, almost half supported not having a classification based upon length of stay. And so this leaves us, this leaves me with the question that maybe we went a little bit too far with what was proposed in the bylaw, which was, I think, greater than two days was a special permit, and then seven days... and then seven days was not a special permit in the agricultural district. So maybe that, you know, swayed a little too far in the regulatory direction. Because you'll see, in this next one, we asked what kind of length of stay people would support. So asking the number of days people would like to see. And so a majority is supporting less than a three-day minimum stay. See, forty percent has no problem with, you know, you can have any, any sort of length of stay. This blue, this light blue here is a two-day stay, and this purple is a three-day stay. So we're looking at a majority of people at least being comfortable with somewhere around a weekend. And then we provided some options based on the bylaw that we submitted to town, had considered at town meeting. Some general zoning concepts and other regulatory concepts, because some of it didn't have to do with zoning. But some regulatory concepts that the town could propose at a future town meeting. And the top four here, the most popular one was to require a local party to be available to respond to issues that may arise with the use. And then number two was parking requirements, so probably ensuring that there's orderly parking on the site. And then the next two after that, um, this was kind of interesting, was having, um, these were at forty, forty percent and forty-five percent. To have a border health inspection and a building code or, and/or fire safety inspection. So those were numbers three and four. Everything else kind of falls below that forty percent mark. And then you can see that there's, there was an option for people to suggest other ideas in here as well.
So were these other ideas things that people put in themselves?
Yep, it was...
They were there or they weren't?
It was a, a text box that people could enter into. So, you know, one, one thing that I want to do is take all these different categories and sort them into larger categories. And we'll be able to see if there were any trends and what was suggested.
But registration process was fifth?
Yes.
Thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight and six percent. So that was, yeah. If we're looking at the top five, that one would make the cut. And then we had people prioritize some concepts, some issues that could arise from short-term rentals. And I think, um, with some of the feedback we've received in different, different public here, or public meetings, noise is, is almost the top concern out of, I think it's one of the top three out of the whole series of these, because we did a series of them. So noise comes in at, oh, okay, it says up here, one is lowest priority, five is highest priority. And so fifty-seven percent of people have some sort of concern with noise. And of that fifty-seven percent, there's thirty-seven point six percent who really strongly believe that that's an issue, or it's a concern for short-term rentals. Then when we move down to parking, we kind of get some more mixed results in here. When you get, get the data a little bit, um, you know, there's almost like a multimodal distribution here, where there's some folks who really aren't concerned about parking, then there are people in the middle who, or people who don't think parking should be a concern, then there are people who are quite a lot same bed line in the center, a couple percentage points higher. And then when you look at the other end, there's, um, about twenty and thirty percent who are concerned about parking. And so you add them together, you get about fifty percent of respondents are concerned about parking versus about twenty-eight percent on the other end. Then disposal of refuse is a concern. This is, uh, pretty, pretty unanimous in the, in the responses, fifty-eight point two percent. I think that was actually our top. No, that was not our top concern here, but it was our second highest top concern. Fire safety, again, you have a pretty substantial amount of folks in the middle who aren't too sure whether or not it's something that needs to be emphasized or not. But on the other end of the spectrum where it is a concern, it's almost fifty percent. That number that, um, fire safety and building code is a concern. Sinage is an area where I don't think there was a lot of concern. Almost forty-two percent of respondents identified signage is not as a priority concern. And you see a similar sort of distribution with impact upon long-term rental availability. That comes in at forty-three percent. So folks are, for these two issues, a little bit less concerned with signage, rental availability, and actively concerned. And then when it comes to, I'll zoom out on this, because the distributions are, are really similar, these two. When it comes to considering increased income for properties owners or the town, it's somewhat mixed, but there's a slightly higher number of folks who think that these, that these, uh, the ability to get income either for the town, or tax revenue for, or excuse me, income for individuals, or income for the town, there's a slight preference at thirty-eight point six percent for individuals and for the town at forty-four point six percent. And then I think the biggest thing that people, I think, call west in this, call west around in the survey was that there are economic benefits to the town to have short-term rentals. You add up the two-end columns, sixty-one percent identify that this is something that, you know, is beneficial to the local economy. And then a majority of folks also think that the increased lodging opportunities, two other columns, fifty-one percent. You know, and that goes along with bringing economic, economic benefits. You have more lodging opportunities, you have some tourism, and that brings benefits to local businesses. So that's, that's it.
Did you design this survey?
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
Gives us a lot more information than we ever...
No, I think that'll help the committee.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a, it wasn't a slam dunk in one way or the other, and I think really the, the name of the game here is going to be finding where we, where's that compromise that'll make this work? You know, it's not like it was completely one-way in the direction. Yes, we absolutely do not want short-term rentals or in the other direction. You know, let's have a laissez-faire approach where there's no regulatory oversight at all, which makes our jobs a lot more difficult when trying to work out what is that gray area that people will support at town meeting.
Did you include in this, um, survey a, because obviously I didn't, but I'm asking this question, but did you ask the respondent to identify the precinct? So we had an idea of where these responses are coming from?
I didn't.
Might be interesting.
Yeah.
No, but I think, you know, based on what I thought beforehand versus what you read from this survey, and four hundred and twenty-eight is a pretty good number of responses, that, um, I thought, uh, first of all, if you go to the town, when we go to town meeting again, you can say, hey, you know, eighty percent of people have a, have a good view of short-term rentals. That's, that's a powerful thing to say. I, and I, and think there should be some, uh, support of this. And I thought that, that the issue of, uh, length of stay was important, but from this survey, it's not. And, and yet, other things are, fire, safety, health, are. And so it gives you a better sense of what to home in on. And so if, uh, if the border health and the building inspector are saying, well, we don't want to get involved, well, the people are saying, these are the issues that are important. And, uh, you know, as I said, fifth most important was registration. And so anyone who says, well, we don't want registration, well, that's not what the survey said. So, uh, you know, there's a lot of information in here about what people do want and what people don't care about. That, that I think if that committee, you know, here are the things people care about, here's what they don't care about. And the, you know, people recognize economic benefit not just to, to the homeowners, but to the town. And that's a good argument, again, to show to town meeting when, uh, when we go there again.
So the, the problem that I see with this, I think it's great, um, the, I don't know, the fourth or fifth or third, border health inspection, and building code, fire safety, and registration are all about the same. If we do that, who's gonna do these inspections in public in favor of that?
Yeah, that's the issue.
There was no option for, can I, can I object? There was no option for no, for nothing. There was no opt, there was, you had to answer in the way that survey was written. So again, it was a wonderful job, Mike. I think it was a wonderful job by, by Michael, trying to carry, to carry something forward. I think this board knows that I've sat in since day one. I think I missed one short-term rental committee meeting, and one planning board meeting on that short-term rental committee. I think we missed it by the two-day. I don't think anyone had a problem with anybody doing the, everyone had a problem with the seven-day. If you watch the meeting over and over again, like I have, it was the seven-day thing for the north end that we had talked about many times. Mark was on that meeting, on that committee. We went into session going to bring it to town meeting with a two-day handle, and then it was changed to seven-day. The last meeting I went to by this planning board, it was voted, it was a two-day meeting turnaround. That's, it was a two-day minimum, and that, then all of a sudden it was seven-day. That's where you lost it, because no one, not everyone can afford a week's stay anywhere. Not all the time, not all of this, on the south end of Westport, yes. But some people on a short-term rental take two, three, four-day weekends. They come in for family reunions, weddings, funerals. They don't need seven days. So a lot of these people who are in agriculture and all that, that rent out properties on their homes, that's who you affected. And I think that's where you lost the vote.
I, I think we're well aware of that.
And I think...
I don't think we need to go over that.
No, but I just...
I think that, I think your, your reply that there was no option for nothing, uh, there is an option here. Says there should be no additional regulation?
There, there's an option...
Twenty-two percent chose that.
There's an option for that. There is an option for people to submit their own ideas, and there's also...
But not in those questions, not, not the questions.
But, but, let me finish.
Yep.
There was also an option, um, for people to select whether those things were important or not. So when you look at the, the oppo, you know, the opposite percentage of, for example, the registration process, thirty-eight point six percent said that that's something that the town should regulate. Then on the flip side, sixty-two percent is saying that's not important to me.
Correct.
So there's data, even if someone selected something or didn't, you know, we were looking at preferences, and so if you didn't select something, that also communicates some information to us.
I'm just asking the board, if there's a way to communicate to everyone out there that we're looking toward like a positive agenda to go forward with short-term rentals. It is affecting the economy of Westport and the sale of homes in Westport right now. So they're, they don't know which way the sale of rentals are gonna go, and how their personal property rights are being affected.
That's my problem with town meeting, because when all the issues stopped, you just called the question. Without, say, without having the ability...
They didn't have a backup, then, right.
Without the ability to say, if we vote against this, all short-term rentals will be disallowed in rental.
And they didn't...
And I've talked to Steve Force about it, because that's the nature of town meeting. It's terrible, because not only this one, but another article that we had. We had no ability to rebut all the stuff that was put out there that was completely erroneous. And then all of a sudden, it's called vote. It loses because you can't explain that this point was wrong, this point was wrong, this point was wrong. And if you don't vote for something, it's... And I was surprised that the three-day or two-day option failed in town meeting, the amendment.
Right, I was too.
And, uh, and then they went right to, okay, let's get rid of it. Why, why are they pushing this down our throat? I could have explained why, but I didn't have the opportunity, so... Anyway, it is what it is. It's a terrible position for the town meeting. And that's why we're continuing the short-term rental committee, because a lot of people want us to just forget it. Say the town's vote.
I would like to volunteer as an independent consultant.
Then we'll take that up at the next meeting, when we see what it's what we need, but, you know, so I think this, this survey was absolutely great, because it gives you an opportunity to, to see what, what bothers people, and what is good, and what doesn't bother people. What surprises me is the signage. Nobody seems to care about signage. You gotta be kidding me. So you could have a neon sign in your window for a short rental? I mean, I think if we asked that question, should we have a lot of neon signs in the window? They'd say no. Anyway, thank you. We'll, we'll smoke it over while we have our first meeting. And, you know, I was hoping that some citizens of Westport would sign a petition to get a petition article in a quickly arranged town meeting to vote on this.
They didn't want their neighbors, they came to my attention. It was told that people did not want their neighbors to know if they were doing this. If they did not, people did not want to be put their personal business out there, like I had spoken before on the board. I had a lot of phone calls. People did not want to know, people to know they rented their house out for weekends here and there. They do not want their neighbors to know. It is a very personal thing, some people that have financial issues, that use it for care for family members, that do it when they go away here and there, and a family member might clean the house. There are some people who do not want to put their name out there.
But there's, there's a lot more people than you know.
No, I, I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I am the all-of-all. I'm saying that that... I'm saying that that was a conversation that, there was a petition started from what I do know.
Really?
I do know of a couple of people that did go to the town hall and talk to the town clerk. But they asked me to carry it, and I refused with my small business. I was not going to put my name on that. They asked me to hold a meeting at the Grange. There was a whole bunch of people who then, I would not carry that torch. That's why I had asked for certain people to talk at certain things. And I, I think at this point, that's why I'm sitting here tonight. There's a lot of people who are, when you're talking about not a weekly rental or a, a name property that people have wealth, but when you're talking, there's a group that did this survey that filled it out, that said they're okay with that, but maybe they're not, they don't want to be known. I bet you there was some anonymous ones that were in that, there. They just don't want to be known. And I think that's the part that didn't come out in all of this short-term rental. I think I spoke for a minority, a bunch of people, that a lot of times that, that we don't represent as a realtor community, but this talks were for the town community.
The, the other reason I think it failed at town meeting was because we had the sewer on the agenda.
And it was so late in the night.
Well, and, so, most of the people who came, the ones that never called before, were against sewer, and they were against the town doing anything, so it lost, just like everyone. Anyway, we have to keep going.
Nope, I guess.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is subdivision by law amendments. So I've been keeping track of some issues in our subdivision bylaws, like terms that need to be defined, and some language that may be needed to get tightened up. So if there's anything that's been mulling around in your head, that you've noticed in the subdivision bylaws, let me know, and we'll get a list together and have a discussion about it at a future meeting.
I'll get there, one thing, right off the top of my head. Is the road a part of this?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
The cross-section, and the length, and the material, if all that stuff is so fragmented here.
There's also inconsistencies in it, and, because there's a diagram, and then there's a section of text, and there's inconsistencies between the two, and that's, that's the number one thing that came to mind when I was kind of looking at this.
And we have a description of what, what they, not to get what they call it, but it's like a thoroughfare road versus a road.
Collector, collector. Collector, yeah.
And, really, I mean, do we really deal with those kinds of things?
Right, and all the roadway definitions need to be, need to be revised, because some of, some of the definitions are, are things like, if in the opinion of the planning board, this is a collector road. And there are actually specific criteria for classifying roads. And so it doesn't need, it shouldn't be up to the planning board's discretion. There are specific things that we can look at to say, no, this is a residential street. This is a collector road, this is, you know. So, we can, and those are some of the definitions I think we should take them.
Michael, a couple of months ago, I sent an email to you with some suggestions about not subdivision by law amendments, but there's some to consider, some amendments to our zoning bylaws. One on solar, large-scale solar rays, and then one on, I think, minimum lengths of rural residential lanes, something like that. I don't know, so are you, is that also a, a topic for discussion?
We can always add it. It would be a separate, you know, zoning versus subdivision.
Right.
But it's good to, to have this sort of discussion early on as opposed to, you know, January, when we're trying to get things together for a town meeting, which I know it's, it weighs out, but it comes first.
It always surprises everybody that we have to be done before January to give it to a spring town meeting, which is crazy.
So if you could resend those suggestions to me?
Sure.
I can't recall when I may have received them. So if you could just resend that, and I'll keep a running tally of things. So on the same note, if any of you have zoning revisions that come to mind, let me know. We can schedule that for another meeting.
So, like you know, the situation we had tonight when Juan released the show for the project, so, and he said there's an association already, is that road, do those people that, what those bylaws expect to be accepted, right?
The town doesn't have to accept it.
Well, and that association's wording, do they know that they're required to plow it? And if it's not accepted, the school bus won't go down it, the mailman won't go down it? So now they're going to come back, you know, with the school bus, the show isn't going down, and we released all the money, and it's not up to standard to be accepted by town meeting. They, they probably don't know that, they saw it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if it's not a town on the road, it's, it's their responsibility. Does the language in their homeowners association or like that, I couldn't say.
You know, I mean, and their approvals, because we have to vote his way. That was never to be accepted town, you've seen what happened to us over there. So that's the thing, that this, I believe, was designed to be an accepted road. So, and he's, all the show is going to be released, hasn't been accepted. All these homeowners said, and I think they have the women on the town.
The town, yeah.
Then it's been a problem since nothing on the board. Because the builder goes away, or the builder dies, or the builder is bankrupt, and the homeowners come, this is before we required homeowners association. And a lot of them had to get the road, they had to get together, they had to hire somebody, go to the home of the plant, you have to have an as-built, all these things. And, so, we have requirements to approve the homeowners association document, don't we?
Yes. That's typically a condition of approval that they submit. In fact, I, I don't know, I don't know when that started to become like a boilerplate language, and I don't know if it always has been, but all the subdivisions that we've, that we need, the subdivision decisions that we need prepared, it's always, it's always-
All the same, so, somebody made it somewhere.
Yeah, it's just a boilerplate, confused, ridiculous.
But do we ever check to see if they're complying with the back roads? That they're holding annual payments, and they have money in the bank, and-
I think that's out of our, out of our hands. I mean, we can't force them to do that, but we, we do require a copy of the HOA nowadays to be put in the file.
Because actually, on the subdivision, the owners' way, they were complaining about the subdivision as well. It was designed to be accepted, it was not accepted.
That's what's designed to be private always. Okay.
All right, so, you may have seen this in the paper already, but for the town's extension of the Quikashan River Rail Trail, we received a sixty-five thousand, nine-hundred-six-dollar grant from Mass Trails to develop preliminary engineer plans for an extension of that shared use path, which we're referring to as the Otapa Connector. Be the town's first shared use path and the town's first contribution to the South Coast Bike Way, which, no, it's not why.
They've long been working on this for twenty years.
There's a lot more energy, I think, to, for each town. There's been movement in Dartmouth, which I'll tell you about, but, so it's this segment right here, this dark brown one, which is a, it's a really high priority segment. So you can see on this map, there's the pink, brown, and blue, and orange. Those are other routes that have been conceptualized over the years. But you see that they all end up at that same point. So that's, that's the critical link in this segment for the Greater South Coast Bike Way, which would go from Fall River all the way up. I think the goal is to get really up towards Province Town and Cape. So, I need to pull together RFP for that, and we'll be putting that out to RFP here pretty soon. We'll be using the plans from that project to get the project advanced to the Transportation Improvement Program. And we also received additional five thousand dollars from the South Coast Bike Way Alliance for this. Since we received the grant, they contributed match, and Planning Off, or Planning Board also contributed a vibrating match.
So does connect to a, a network of bike paths through Fall River?
Mm-hmm. It's built into that point, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, it is, we can-
It's built up to that point.
From Fall River side, yeah.
So it terminates, you can see those green line right here? It's kind of hard to see, but if I, I'll just pinpoint this McDonald's here. The trail goes from that point to about the Westport line. And it's, it's new, it's new too.
They just finished that last piece of last year.
Yeah, yeah. And the goal on this end is to continue going up through Fall River and eventually get to River Island.
I see. Not just to go to McDonald's, but to-
Right, although if you feel so inclined, you could bike from Province Town to the Fall River McDonald's.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So is the bike lanes connected from Fall River to Province?
Um, not yet, so the, I think the goal is to get somewhere up around Warren, because I know Warren is expanding the bike trail from 103 over to the Mass Line. And then that would connect to, right up here, around here, is the East Bay Bike Path. The East Bay Bike Path goes from Providence to Bristol.
That's pretty, can you see the bike paths?
It's nice, I love it right on. Yeah, so, there's, there's this initiative that's going on. And then with the Greater South Coast Bike Ways Trail, we're trying to coordinate the work with Dartmouth, obviously. And so at a recent Dartmouth Select Board meeting, they voted to recommend use of their community preservation funds to fund the conceptual plans for the northern route of the South Coast Bike Way. And where the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, I don't know if I can make it easy though. The direction they're headed is this northern route right here. So, from Old Bedford Road to, I think it's Old Fall River Road, and then, I forget what it is once it gets to Bedford. But they're working on, going to be using those funds to apply for a Mass Trails grant and start to conceptualize building out that northernly route. And so myself and the Bike and Walking Path Committee are going to go to the Select Board to ask for them to recommend to town's CPC to do the same thing. And then we would just look at the Westport segment. We, we are definitely going to need more match for that application just because it's probably going to be, the cost will probably be double or triple what we're doing here. And that was kind of a stretch for finding match, just because like, we don't, we don't have that much match to work with on a yearly basis. The Mass Trails Grant has a little bit more of a higher match contribution. So we'll, we'll see what the Select Board says, but it'll give us that, that concept. We're also still, you know, we're advocating for the Route Six Bike Path as well, but that's Mass jurisdiction, so I think we're really waiting to see where they're headed with their Route Six redesign.
Yeah, so, these bicycle paths are, the ones that are going north of 195, that would seem to be recreation-oriented. And the one going down Route Six, if we ever get there, would be more transportation-oriented.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, and that's the rationale behind both the paths, is that the Route Six one would support more of a multimodal network. So, you know, you have a high-capacity thoroughfare for not just car traffic, but also the bus route is there. So if you needed to, you could bike up to Route Six, catch the bus, go to Bedford, or, you know, wherever you need to go. Whereas, yes, the, the northern route would be more of a recreational route because you're going to have fewer interruptions in the bike network. With Route Six, you're going to have lots of driveways and higher speeds and higher road capacity, and it makes for a more stressful biking environment, even if you're off to the side. Whereas, you know, it's just, it's, it's different when you're, when you're on paths surrounded by trees or biking past a car versus buses and cars and trucks.
Just out of curiosity, I want to interrupt you more than necessary, but, electric bikes, are they welcome on these bike trails?
In Massachusetts, they are, I believe, I don't know if there's been any legislation to restrict them. I know in Rhode Island, there has been, or something.
Because my nephew lives in Newport, and almost all the restaurant workers commute through the streets, pre-pass, and it's, it's getting like New York, you've got to watch where you're going. Okay.
Next is our hazard mitigation plan, just a quick update on that. We kicked that off last week with par engineers. So, we just had a general discussion about risk assessments in town, where there might be pinch points in the transportation networks if they're ever need to be with evacuation. Focused a lot on what the needs of the fire, highway, and police departments are. They, like, the, the police and fire and highway, they all need more resources. I was doing a lot of other town departments and so on. There's some, some of the things that we had discussed is that in light of, you know, how, how can we plan around those issues? And so we are tentatively going to have a, another meeting on August 7th. So Jim, mark that down, you're the, one of our, the committee others, in rep for the planning board. I will, yeah, tentatively, I will probably, we may have to reschedule that because that is not helping too. We probably hold without the tape. Anyway, next is our application to coastal zone management, to the Coastal Resilience Grant. I'll be submitting this this week. This will develop a beach management plan for East Beach, Atlantic Avenue, and Beach Avenue. We've been talking about a plan for this for, since the winter, since the last storm at East Beach really hard. So we've been developing this. I think if you remember, at, at the end of the year, we dedicated some funds to contract with GZ Environmental. So they'll be getting that application over to me tomorrow, anticipating about the one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar grant across. I've already approached the Select Board for a sport letter.
Paul Schmidt talked to me or texted me today that he's been in touch with CCM, and they know that they have nowhere near enough money to deal with water-facing communities like Westport.
Yeah, Amy and I both talked to him today.
Yeah.
Had similar conversations, yeah. Regarding our online permitting, we just contracted with Full Circle Technologies. We had awarded it to them, now we've signed the contracts, so now we'll be doing a kickoff meeting with them, hopefully sometime soon, to get online permitting off the ground. So now I'll be doing a kickoff meeting with them, hopefully sometime soon, to get online permitting off the ground. And I believe our building department, they're going to make the first shot at making that transition. So stay tuned on that. And lastly, is an update on our municipal separate storm sewer system permitting. This is something we have to do every year. We have to do catchment investigations to try to identify potential sources of oesent discharges. So typically, an oesent discharge would be something like someone hooking up a washer to discharge into the storm sewer. And then they'll, you know, test the water, detect the kinds of, kind of pollutants in the water. And if they, you know, there, there may be some areas for investigation. So the 51 that they did, only two were flagged. So we have, have some funds that we can put forward towards that this fiscal, fiscal year. The work will be done next year, probably in June is when they do it because it's raining. And it's raining, you get more of the system flushing, you can get better test cycles. But this is something, like I said, we do it year over year. And this year, we were fortunate enough to have a grant from the East Bay National Asturies Program. So we were able to do a little bit of actual work. And then we're also able to use that, those grant funds instead of the planning boards budget, to put up match for other things. So we're thankful that, that those funds are available to have that alternative because otherwise with these different grants I've been applying to, I don't think we'd be able to put up match.
So are, are we able to keep up with the reporting requirements for the investment?
Yes. That's something Amy handled last year. And we contracted with Kleinfelder. And Kleinfelder did a lot of the work with, with the reporting.
I talked to Kleinfelder last week, actually. Peter Varga reached out, so that is for deadline to submit all documentation on September 30th. So it's already on my radar to get all that stuff over to Peter Varga.
Did they move up the deadline this year?
Did they move it up? No, I think it's always at the end of September.
Alright, that's all there.
Okay, minutes. Mr. Chair, I've looked at the minutes for June 18th. I, and I find them complete and accurate. So I would move that we approve the minutes of June 18th, 2024.
Second one.
Any discussion?
Comments? It does say that the next meeting of the planning board is August 8th, 2023. And I think it meant August 13th, 2024, or August Yeah. Other than that, I think we're correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask one question relative to those minutes? The last item on the, on the last page, I, I mentioned that we have a climate resilience committee coming up this Thursday. And I, and I mentioned information that I'd heard from Mark Rasmussen at the Buzzes Bay Coalition about fairly alarming information from the NOAA tide gauge in Woods Hole. About 15 centimeters of sea level rise in the last two years. And whether we might investigate whether someone from NOAA, USGS, might address the climate resilience committee. Have you reached out to them? Might we get someone for Thursday or is that something that you have about for a meeting after that? Or the other option would be, as I had asked Mark to see the same request for a coalition board meeting in August. We could have, if he has talked to someone there, we could have him, if he's coming to the meeting, I don't know if he's coming to the meeting, summarize what he's found out. I just don't know whether you've had time to talk to anyone at USGS or no.
No, I honestly wouldn't, you know, where to start with trying to contact people. Would you happen to?
Yeah, why don't, I'll, I'll talk to Mark and see first of all, who's the person? And then secondly, if he's talked to someone and he's available and coming to the CRC, he might be able to just summarize what he's found out from that.
If Mark has
Well, I'd rather get directly more from USGS and NOAA. But I'll, I'll talk to Mark first.
Okay. Just as an aside, I'm a baywatcher, meaning it's like test water.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, like five, every five or six days throughout the summer, in the same place, all the time. I've been doing it for 18 years. They sent around a notice of, two days ago, Tony Williams, that they've been noticing much longer water in testing and to watch out for fish kills and brown-colored water and stuff like that. Let them know what's up.
Yeah, the river, my, where I go in, or I see it is the east shore, east branch. In, I guess, our reaction to all the rain we've had. But it is, I've never seen water, it's dirty, just opaque, calm as you can. Look, you can't see through it. And things floating in and along the shore. Only when you get out to someplace like Ship Rock where there's a good flow coming in and out of the channel flow, just clear up.
Where I test, it's in the harbor, so it's fairly clear because there's so much ocean coming in. But where I live, it is much more opaque.
Yeah, it's been, well, a lot of rain this year, which contributes to
The runoff.
The runoff. But it's been the turbidity, because I test up at X Bridge, has been, you know, not even a meter, you can't see a meter, it goes down one or two feet and boom, it's like, it's, it's invisible.
Okay, anything, we didn't have 48 hours recently anticipated, within 48 hours. Anyone? Okay. Yes, please. Someone?